Is mayor? Oh, mayor, nandito na pa. Haha. Ati ganun. Abulay, hindi na kumili ka ng tao. Ang mukha. Halu, halu. Halu, halu. Halu, halu. Ayon? Halu, halu. Hala, hala, ano ba? Ah! Suma matutu. Amay na. May nakon. Png. Pan. Tastig. Pan. Ang anu. Ayon. Halu. Nagulat trinito. Pa ayon sa. Pero atis. Ang turn. Kolekta namin 'yung home. Ati. Haha. Kus forward. Haha. Ayon lang. Taka ba namang. Ano? Nela na doon. Aso may biges ako. Sa paginom. Una mo boss. O si malis. Ako alam mo, alam mo kanina.
Anthony Ronald. Ah, first case ni Gomez Masina. Ah, pero pan kami related din sa, sa tan. Pero mas ano pala dong? Mas si Sina, sanay niya, sakanan ni Kong Sina magkapatid. Kapua. Kapu.
Digan sa. Tayo niyo. Sila kayo niyo. Ah, dito. Ken. Karapalan. Kalabo. Kamagotan. Elang din na dun, kapur din.
Atan sa.
Panihas. Ah. Mongro. Oh! Kapri. Akay. Ah? Sagi ni Sini. Ah? Ganun magati. O Kong Kong Kong, abres kung tahan ba. Kapu pa ni. Kapalas mga page. Una tapos.
The session is called to order. Please stand for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magigil, pero sang silang anan. Alag ng puso sa dipitoy buhay. Lupang hiniram, guyakan ang magigil. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakitong paghaw. Kay ilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawal. Ang isap ng wata at moyka kumpay narapikin. Ang pituwin at haraw niya kay lahat, mapay matidiling. Lupan ang haraw ng war, aming pagsipka. Uyay yami sa dipitong. Aming ligaya dapat may mahapin at mapatay ng daril sayo.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The secretary general is directed to call the roll of members.
For all call of members, honorable representatives, Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Aragansia, Asistyo, Atide, Mementado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Maronda, Marzaga, Pascug, Bautista, Bautistlim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Pryones, Rosas, Buhain, Bulat Megtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayonui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Tsunggalau, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wako Jaime, Ko Wako Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Tagooc, Talipe, Dalod, Dayanghirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Los Santos, Dipaporo Muhammad Kalib, Dipaporo Sitiamina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavid, Duhalley, Duterte, Difo Ostino Ino, Difo Ostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enciso, Enverga, Escudero, Spares, Espina, Estrela, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Oturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gerjola, Garin, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Orelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Griseta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Ko Olgaara, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Dakson, Dakson Noel, Nagman, Lagon Dafni, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lasadin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Mag Sino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Le Villa, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Kuaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Tongchuan, Ordanes, Ordega, Huano Dison, Padiernos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Pandaligan, Pancho, Manotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Tomarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Legencia, Le Villa Brian, Le Villa Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbariya, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbamon, Salo, Sálvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Sinson Richel, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihan, Solon, Soriano, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Talad, Talado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynold Smichael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnoldfo, Tevez Jose, Tat Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfor Alfrendel, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuason, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villa Nueva, Villor, Villa Rasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Villago, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Di Vina Grace, Yu Jason Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 309 members responded to the call.
With 309 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the journal of the previous session. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The motion is carried. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request the secretary general be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The secretary general is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on the first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of business, bills on first reading. House Bill 6202, mandating the use of on-body cameras by law enforcement officers during any anti-illegal drug and criminality operations by Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 6203, promoting inclusive and sustainable economic development through the institution of One Town One Project Philippines program by Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6204, providing an additional ground for canceling the certificate of candidacy of a nuisance candidate and making the acts of a nuisance candidate an election offense by Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 6205, expanding the powers of LGUs to provide local mass public transportation systems by Representative Gachalian.
To the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6206, providing for the modernization of the public health emergency preparedness and first and response capabilities of the Philippines by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6207, establishing the Philippine Virology Science and Technology Institute by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health and the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 6208, creating the Philippine Centers for Disease Prevention and Control by Representative Miguel.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6209, establishing the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement CM under the DOH by Representative Miguel.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6210, establishing the Virology and Vaccine Institute of the Philippines by Representative Miguel.
To the Committee on Health and the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 6211, providing for allowances and benefits for public social workers during the COVID-19 pandemic by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Social Services.
Committee report, committee report number 176 submitted by the Committee on Justice on House Bill Number 6224.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority leader.
Sir Speaker, we leave from the house. I would like to open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? There being none, the chair declares a privilege hour.
Sir Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Juan Carlos R. Josie Atide of the First District of Quezon City for his privileged speech.
Representative Juan Carlos R. Atide is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues in the House of Representatives, magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. This representation rises in this chamber for the first time on a matter of personal privilege to speak regarding an urgent concern that directly affects the life of my constituents and the lives of millions of Filipinos who live in Metro Manila. It is an issue, if not addressed, may also derail the aspirations of the Philippines to become, as President Ferdinand Bombo Marcos Jr. says, "Asia's fastest rising star." The issue, Mr. Speaker, is flooding in the national capital region. Many of us in the house are intimately familiar with this problem. There are those who have been stuck in traffic resulting from heavy, heavy afternoon downpours. The house has suspended work in the past because of widespread, widespread flooding in the metropolis. Many of us have had to cancel or postpone meetings in parts of Metro Manila following heavy rains because of, because roads are impassable. Isa sa mga lugar na apektado po ay ang aking distrito. Unfortunately, our district is not alone in its misery. As many parts of Metro Manila become inaccessible and are paralyzed when rains pummel our capital. The damage caused by floods in the whole country, not just in Metro Manila, is substantial. The Philippine Statistics Authority recently revealed that the total cost of damage due to national extreme events and disasters that hit the country in 2021, Mr. Speaker, was 60.7 billion pesos. This is 27% higher than in 2020 when the damage cost us 47.8 billion pesos. The future appears just as bleak. A report by global professional service company DGHD Economics, "The Economics of Water Risk and Future Resilience," points out that our country is ranked as four most affected country in the world for water-related disaster with approximately 20 typhoons entering the country each year, often bringing torrential rain and flooding. These floods and tropical storms, according to the report, could result in losses amounting to 89 billion US dollars between 2022 and 2050 at the current exchange rate that is equivalent to 5.1 trillion pesos, Mr. Speaker. Flooding in Metro Manila is a painful constant that is reflected in the headlines of articles that report them. Please allow me to provide some examples. In 2012, a major daily published an article that reads "Philippine stocks fall as investors assess impact of floods." In 2014, an international wire service posted a similar article online which says "Heavy rain floods Philippine capital markets schools shut." In 2017, a respected international business publication came out with a piece entitled "Philippine markets shut at ways high storm-water floods capital." An editorial in a broadsheet in 2018 shouts "Paralyzed by floods." In 2020, in the midst of COVID-19 pandemic, an international media outfit ran an article with this headline "Manila paralyzed after typhoon Vampco sweeps across Philippines." Last year, the same broadsheet that published the "Paralyzed by floods" editorial came out with another editorial entitled "Paralyzed by floods again." What people around the world have read about, what people around the world have read about, my constituents experience on a regular basis. In my first month as representative, thunderstorms and heavy rain caused sudden flooding and several barangays in my district in Barangay Mariblo, Barangay Santo Domingo, and Barangay Talayan residents experienced, experienced waist-deep floods. At sa mga barangay po, nakatulad ng bungad, San Antonio, Catipunan, at Babayan naman hanggang tuhod pong baha. Dun naman po, sa West Riverside, kasama po ang barangay Del Monte na hindi na po makalabas ang mga tao sa kanilang kanilang bahay dahil po sa tindi ng baha. Many roads in my district were impassable, which made it impossible for families to go out and buy food and other basic necessities. Ganun na po kalala, Mr. Speaker. With assistance from our city and barangay officials as well as national government agencies, we extend to families who need food and water. In the days and weeks that followed, we put in place teams to monitor and respond to flooding and to, and have in several instances donated pumps to chronically affected residents whose homes are flooded even after a light downpour. While I commend my officials in Quezon City for their assistance, especially the barangay captains in our district, these actions are stopgap measures at best and will, and will not address the roots of our perennial flooding problem. Pwede namin abutan ng tulong ang mga nasalantapo, pero hindi ito sapat para maayos ang matinding baha o matinding problema ng baha. There is nothing we can do about our climate and our weather, Mr. Speaker. As mentioned earlier, our country is beset by 20 typhoons a year on average. We have a rainy season that stretches from June to November, but it is, it is not uncommon to be hit by heavy rains and typhoons in our so-called dry season. Not that our typhoon this year, typhoon Agatha, Agaton, sorry, struck us last summer in April. As we have seen the past decade, extraordinary amounts of rainfall are no longer uncommon. If anything, they, they are even getting more frequent because of climate change. We have no power over the weather and the amount of rain that falls in Metro Manila, Mr. Speaker. Neither do we have the power to turn back the clock and reverse the growing population and rapid urbanization of Metro Manila, which has exacerbated the consequences of decades of logging that have greatly reduced the forest cover in upland areas around the national capital region. But we can, my friends and colleagues, call attention to this issue and urge appropriate agencies and offices to take steps necessary to address the issues that contribute to flooding in Metro Manila. Kaya kayang tugunan ang problema na ito dahil alam na natin kung bakit bumabaha at may plano ng naapprove po nung 2012 para tugunan ito ang Metro Manila Flood Management Project. Approved in 2012 and launched in 2017, the Metro Manila Flood Management is funded by the World Bank and Asian Infrastructure Investment Bank and seeks to improve flood management in selected areas of Metro Manila. According to the project abstract, this project is composed of four components. First, the modernization of drainage areas that will involve the construction of 20 new pumping stations and upgrading of an estimated 36 existing pumping stations and complementary infrastructure. It also involves the improvement of associated waterways and drainage channels and the development of new drains when required. The second component involves minimizing solid waste and water waste, while the third component involves participatory, housing and resettlement. The fourth component, project management and coordination, will provide the support for the operation of the project management offices in DPWH or Department of Public Works and Highways and of course, MMDA, Metropolitan Manila Development Authority with respect to the management and coordination of the respective parts of the project. This project has been approved already and has funding, Mr. Speaker, but this representation believes that the efforts must be made to fast-track its implementation, especially given the project status indicators as of October 31, 2021. Allow me to cite a few examples, Mr. Speaker. By November 30, 2024, the target is 4,900 flood-prone areas that are free of water within 24 hours after a major rainfall event. As of October 31, 2021, the number accomplished is 61. Out of the 2,500 targeted households that need to be resettled from areas that obstruct drainage systems, none has been, none has been resettled. One of the third, out of the 36 pumping stations that need to be rehabilitated, only one has been rehabilitated. Only three out of the 200 target barangays have improved solid waste management programs in place. The project targets the construction of 20 new pumping stations by the end of 2024 and none has been completed. Mr. Speaker, friends and colleagues, this project was approved in 2012. The funding was approved by the World Bank and Asian Infrastructure Investment Bank in 2017. It is scheduled for completion in 2024. However, given the status indicators I cited previously, interventions may be necessary so that the project can be completed on time so that the relief from chronic flooding in Metro Manila can come sooner rather than later. In that regard, Mr. Speaker, this representation would like to put forward some recommendations in order to fast-track this project and other Metro Manila flood control projects. Una po sa lahat, Mr. Speaker, mukhang napapanahon na para mag-designate ng isang opisyal mula sa hektuib, behektibo na tututok sa flood control projects by designating a flooding czar in the cabinet, someone we will primarily be responsible for ensuring proper coordination between the DPWH and MMDA and NCR's various local governments with regards to flood control projects. This represents, this representation also urges the DPWH to allocate funds in order to conduct a study that will determine the feasibility of the following. Una po sa lahat, the construction of the retarding ponds in malls, basketball courts, playgrounds, parks, other open spaces as well as box culverts under roads, measures that are implemented in other countries, Mr. Speaker, like Japan, Hong Kong, even Singapore. The relocation, secondary relocation of informal settlers where retarding ponds will be constructed. Third, the construction of high-rise walls and pumping stations at the San Juan River and the assessment of the master plan for flood control of Metro Manila and surrounding areas. American environmentalist Paul Hawken points out the most floods are caused by man and not weather. In the case of our national's capital, this is especially true, but we do not have the time to rule over environmental missteps of the past. It is up to us to find solutions so that our people and the cities are not paralyzed and immobilized after each and every heavy downpour. Mr. Speaker, we cannot go to our constituents and tell them to accept flooding as a reality that they have to live with. Pag may baha, walang klase. Pag may baha, walang trabaho. Pag may baha, bilanggo tayo sa sarili nating tahanan. Pag may baha, bahala na si Batman. Paano naman magiging kaakit-akit ang Pilipinas sa mga foreign investors kung ang sentro ng negosyo ay nagsasarating umuulan ang malakas? How can we tout ourselves as Asia's fasting-rising star when all of us worrying when the sky dims? Let us not wait for the next. Let us not wait for the next heavy downpour to wash away our dreams and hopes for a flood-free, progressive Metro Manila. With over five years left in his term, the president with our help can leave a lasting imprint in efforts to finally solve the flooding problems of Metro Manila. Magtulungan po tayo para tugunan ang baha at mabawasan ang problema na kinakaharap ng ating mga kababayan. Maraming maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Juan Carlos R. Josia Taidé to the Committee on Rules. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we continue with the privilege hour, I would like to recognize the guests of Representative Jefferson Konghun, the eighteen officers of Calingap, senior citizen from Olongopo City of the first district of Zambales, namely Edelouisa Cruz, Ms. Yolanda Mirador, Mr. Renz Cruz, Mr. Jimmy Piláez, Mr. Arman Herona, Mr. Ben Galang, Ms. Daisy Bueno, Ms. Dang Bautista, Mr. Jesse Guzmán, Mr. Joey Tupe, Ms. Flor Magsusi, Ms. Celia Lorenzo, Ms. Ellie Navarro, Ms. Marlin Cortum, Ms. Emelita Santiago, Ms. Edna Ortugera, Ms. Rose Villiegas, and Ms. Martha Abayot.
To the guests of Congressman Jefferson Konghun, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we continue the privilege hour, I'd also like to acknowledge the guests of Tingog Partilis representative, Honorable Jude Asidre, Counselor Quinn Cruz, Alberto Portuguese, Evelyn Mususod, and Joshua Santos.
To the guests of Honorable Jude Asidre, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to recognize also the guest of our honorable Deputy Majority Leader, Honorable Jose Bong Tevez Jr., there Honorable Pedro Bucall, Mayor Magdalena Laguna, Honorable Alberto Reyes, Mayor of Mabitac Laguna, Honorable Ronald Sana, Vice Mayor of Mabitac Laguna, Honorable Apollo Aguilar, Sangguniang Bayan Member, Mabitac Laguna, Honorable Romar Merano, Sangguniang Bayan Member, Mabitac Laguna, Norman Licong, Head of the Municipal Planning and Development Council of Magdalena Laguna, Olivia Evidente, Municipal Administrator, Corazon Monsayak, Executive Assistant to the Mayor, Magdalena Laguna, and Samuel Rixio, Consultant of Mabitac Laguna.
To the guests of Deputy Majority Leader, Honorable Jose Bong Tevez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed with the privilege hour, may we request that the following guests of the Honorable Deputy Majority Leader Bong Tevez be recognized and acknowledged. We have Honorable Honalina R. Reyes, President of the Philippine Councilors League Laguna Chapter, Honorable Ambiel John C. Pangani Ban, Honorable Attorney Ron Erwin D. Esquivel, Honorable Marlon Basas, Honorable Grace B. Reo Dika, Honorable Joselito G. Katindig, Honorable Romar M. Merano, Honorable Hans Christian R. Rondilia, and Honorable Nathaniel Bernales II, Majority Leader.
To the guests of Deputy Majority Leader, Honorable Bong Tevez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from Act Teachers Partilis, the Honorable Franz Castro, be recognized to avail of the privilege art.
Honorable Franz Castro is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat at sa ating mga kasamahan sa camera, mga bisita, at sa ating mga mamamayang nanonood dito sa ating proceedings. Taong 2019, nang sumingaw ang harassment at pananakot laban sa visa ng "confidential" na utos na nagmula pa sa mataas na level ng PNP. Ang mapangpahamak at ilegal na profiling na ito ay nagbigay daan sa malatokhang operations sa mga eskwelahan, opisina, at maging sa mga bahay ng mga guro at pagkuha ng mga personal na impormasyon at sensitibong personal na impormasyon nila gaya ng address at mga kaugnayang politikal. Mr. Speaker, mga kamambabatas, na iskung kunin ang oportunidad na ito upang ipaubot. Nasa kasamaang palad, hindi naputo lang harassment at pananakot. Na sinimulan pa noong 2018 at 2019 sa ilegal na profiling ng PNP laban sa ating mga guro at kanilang mga organisasyon at unyon sa ilalim ng Alliance of Concerned Teachers. May reports pang pinaabot sa representasyong ito na hanggang ngayon, kung saan ang mga gurong kilala bilang membro o di kaya ay leader ng act o asosyon na mga unyon konektado rito ay pinupuntahan sa kanilang mga eskwelahan at bahay na mga ahente ng AFP, PNP, NICA, and TFLC. Dahil daw sa kanilang mga organisasyon, sila raw ay "enemies of the state." Harassment at pananakot parin kahit noong kasagsagan ng pandemya. Dahil maraming ulat ng pagpapadisaffiliate at pagtangkang, pagpapadisaffiliate ng mga guro sa regional union sa ilalim ng act. At noong March 10, 2021, naglabas ang DILG na isang memorandum na lantaran tinatawag na Communist Terrorist Group Front Organization ng act, kasama ang Confederation for Unity, Recognition, and Advancement of Government Employees or Courage. At nag-uutos rin ng kaparehong ilegal na profiling laban sa government employees na membro ng nasabing progresibong organisasyon. Patuloy ang mga webinars at face-to-face na so-called information drives, kung saan nililista ang act at iba pang mga progressive organizations, kasama kaming mga kinatawan mula sa makabayan block bilang CTGs. Walang basihan ang paratang na ito na ayon sa nasabing memorandum ay lumabas sa isang undisclosed and confidential meeting na inupuan ng DILG. Pero gaya ng iba pang malisyosong bintang na red tagging, sinasalamin ito ang tangkang takutin gamitin ang kapangyarihan ng pamahalaan at rekurso, pera ng taong bayan, at mga nagsasabi ng totoo. Mr. Speaker at mga kamambabatas, hindi lingit sa kaalaman natin na mayorya sa ating mga guro at support personnel sa mga pribado at pampublikong eskwelahan ay kababaihan. Signipikanteng bahagi ng pagpatakbo ng mga paaralan ay mula sa lakas nila, ma'am. Di matatawarang kontribusyon na mga maestra ang dahilan kung bakit milyong-milyong batang Pilipino kada taon ang nasisiguro kahit papaano ang karapatan nila sa edukasyon. Ngunit ang ibig sabihin lang nito ay mga kababaihang guro at kawanis sa edukasyon ang kumakargo sa malaking bahagi na mga suliranin sa mga paaralan. Sa katunayan, mas mabigat ang onos ng mga babae ang guro at kawanis dahil sa pagtatapos nilang pasanin at ang mga problema sa eskwelahan, mga problema sa bahay naman ang kailangan harapin. Kaya kung may sumisigaw man ng hinahing ukol sa di na kabubuhay na sahod o excessive administrative and clerical work o kawalanang karampatang mga benepisyo, malaking posibilidad na ang naguro ito na nagsasabi lamang na totoo ay babae. Kung may boses na nagahapag ng makamasang pagbubuwis, halimbawa bilang isang solusyon sa kahirapan, malaking boses dito ay boses ng kababaihan. Ngunit ano man ang kasarian ay isang gurong lumalaban, may tuturing siyang naglalahad ng pagpapagaan sa araw-araw na buhay, pagangat sa ekonomikong katayuan at proteksyon na mga kalayaang civil at politikal ng bawat maestra, bawat nanay, bawat natay, at breadwinner ng pamilya, bawat kaanak, bawat katrabaho, at kaibigang babae, at ng lahat na mga mamamayan. Every militant teacher is in her, his, or their core is a feminist, a human rights defender, and a social justice advocate. Kaya ang bawat banta at atake laban sa mga makabayang guro ay may tuturing na banta at atake laban sa kababaihan at sa buong mamamayan. Ang bawat pananakot at tangkang pagpatahimik sa mga makabayang guro, bawat malisyoso at walang basihang bintang at red tagging, ay pananakot din sa kababaihan at pagpatahimik sa buong lipunan. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa ko mamabatas, sa darating na biyernes, ikadalawampotlima ng Nobyembre, ay International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, o ang tinatawag nating Aydevaw. Alalahanin na ang Aydevaw ay diniklara bilang pagcondena sa state violence against women bilang paggunita sa pagpatay noong 1960 na mga puersa ng diktador na si Rafael Trujillo sa tatlong magkakapatid na Mirabal, na kabilang sa nagsimula ng kilusang mamamayan sa Dominican Republic. Ang Aydevaw ay araw na pagkilala ang mga paniniwalang walangpuang sa isang demokratikong lipunan ang karasan laban sa mga kababaihan, social justice advocates, and human rights defenders. Ang paggamit sa espotikong rehemen ng Trujillo ng makinarya ng estado laban sa tinaguriang Las Mariposas at sa mga mamamayang Dominican Republic ay walang pinagiba sa harassment, paninira, at red tagging laban sa mga truth tellers ng ating bansa ngayon. Kabilang na ang mga guro at mga nananawagan para sa makataong sahod, serbisyo, at makamasang mga solusyon sa kahirapan sa ating bansa. Walang pinagiba ang pagpatay sa Mirabal Sisters, sa mga AJK, at iba pang mga forma ng karasan ngayon sa Pilipinas. Mr. Speaker at mga kapwa ko kinatawan, na way kunin natin ang Aydevaw ngayong taon bilang isang pagkakataon upang ipahayag ang solidong commitment ng kamarang ito at ng buong kongreso para subpuin ang lahat ng forma ng karasan sa kababaihan. Kabilang na ang deklarasyon sa red tagging bilang isang krimen, pag-imbestiga at napakaraming incidente ng red tagging na hinahapag ng bloke na makabayan laban sa mga mamamayan at pagsiguro na malagot ang mga nasa likod nito. So, Mr. Speaker at kapwa ko kinatawan, maligayang Aydevaw po sa araw ng November 25 at mabuhay po ang mga nakikibakang mga guro at mga kababaihan. Maraming salamat at magandang hapon.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Franz Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Honorable Franz Castro is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed with the privilege art, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Steve Chong Bian Solon of the Lone District of Sarangani, namely Mayor George F. Falgi, Ms. Laika Falgi, Ms. Jeremy Cathedral, and Mr. Grego Duig.
The Congressman of the Lone District of Sarangani, Honorable Steve Chong Bian Solon, is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the sixth district of Manila, Representative Benvenido M. Abante Jr., be recognized to avail of the privilege art.
The gentleman from the sixth district of Manila, Representative Benvenido Abante Jr., is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I start, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to request a little bit of silence from the gallery in respect to the decorum of the House of Representatives to the speaker. A point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman. Members of the House, please heed to the request of the gentleman from Manila.
Thank you. To our esteemed Speaker Martin Ramualdes, to the young and good-looking Deputy Speaker Frasco, my fellow leaders and esteemed colleagues in the House of Representatives. Magandang hapon po sa inyo lahat. Mr. Speaker, this representation rises on a matter of personal privilege. As the chairperson of the Committee on Human Rights, to share the legislative menu of our primary stakeholders, which we hope and pray will define our human rights legislative agenda for the 19th Congress. My esteemed colleagues, our country faces numerous challenges. For the past couple of years, our attention has been monopolized by an invisible enemy, a virus that claimed Filipino lives and caused incalculable damage to our economy. Understandably, our focus the past years has been on protecting the lives of our people. This representation believes, however, that in this Congress, it is time to protect our people's rights as well. For as the late UN Secretary-General Kofi Annan said, and I quote, "We will not enjoy security without development. We will not enjoy development without security. And we will not enjoy either without respect for human rights," end of quote. The threats to our people's human rights are as real as the pandemic we just overcame. Similarly, we cannot neglect this concern lest our people be saddled with the consequences of inaction. At the recent session of the United Nations Human Rights Council, some of these threats were raised. These include concerns regarding the alleged culture of impunity in our anti-drug campaign and calls for accountability and swift justice for the victims of extrajudicial killings and their families. To these concerns, our government representative and former colleague, former Cavite representative and now Justice Secretary Christine Boing Rimulia responded with optimism as he stressed that our nation can very well, as he has said, and I quote, dispel the mistaken notion of a culture of impunity in the country, end of quote. This is possible, according to Secretary Rimulia, given the four pillars of the Philippine Human Rights Agenda, namely, and I quote this, Mr. Speaker, "Transformational reform for justice and law enforcement sectors, investments of rights, protection of vulnerable groups, and construction and open engagement with the international community," end of quote. Earlier, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, he assured the members of the UN Human Rights Council that the government would be pursuing reforms to attain what he calls to be real justice in real time. My dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, this representation views the current state of human rights as akin to floating in a quicksand. We are being drawn deeper and deeper into a quagmire of unresolved issues, and the more we struggle, the more we will... the more we will sink and be stuck in oftentimes unwarranted controversy. The times demand, Mister Speaker, that we be quicker than quicksand. Now is the time to be proactive and to adopt a national human rights framework and action plan that would institutionalize a viable, sustainable, and comprehensive perspective on human rights issues, implementing a human rights-based approach to legislation, and a whole-of-nation approach to policies, plans, and programs of action. What are the human rights issues that this body can help address? One, civil and political rights violations, as reflected in incidents of red tagging involving the following: human rights advocates, legislators, including this representation, members of political and civil society organizations, lawyers and judges, and members of the media. These are the victims of malicious statements of overzealous citizens who, with questionable logic and unfounded assumptions, associate the victims' actions and statements a stunt amount to propagating the communist ideology. Number two, economic and socio-cultural rights are threatened by gloomy forecasts and statistics. Consider the following: a growing global population of 8 billion. In October, a 7.7% inflation rate per the Philippine Statistics Authority. The observations of BSP Governor Felipe Medallia, who projects that this rate might even peak in November and December, and massive damage caused by natural and man-made disasters. Number three, a global crisis that may weaken our nation's capacity to provide the quality of life that each Filipino deserves, especially the poor, the vulnerable, and the marginalized sectors, what we refer to as matatag, maginhawa, at panatag na buhay, vision and mission in ambition nothing 2040. Crisis in oil, energy, transportation, food supply, public health, and other areas have seriously impacted our country. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, there is clear evidence that our country now confronts a human rights crisis. One wherein our people, our constituents suffer from hunger and poverty. May I repeat, suffer from hunger and poverty, injustice, environmental degradation, and many other forms of human rights violations, natural or man-made. Given this, we in the House must work to build a consensus and establish a concerted plan of action, as I call it, a national human rights action plan, that would embody a multi-sectoral and multi-dimensional approach to human rights, an action plan that utilizes a human rights lens and focuses on the promotion, protection, and fulfillment of human rights obligations. The government has the primary duty better of human rights obligations through the national human rights institution, the Commission on Human Rights, the State Agent, the Armed Forces of the Philippines, and its Center on the Law of Armed Conflict, the police forces represented by the Philippine National Police Human Rights Affairs Office. After all, the PNP, being civil in nature and called upon as the protector of the people, should be the best example on this. And the executive department's presidential human rights committee secretariat have recommended several human rights measures to our committee, which I believe deserve the serious consideration of this august chamber. The Committee on Human Rights, Mister Speaker, for its part, has aligned its legislative priorities with these agencies' proposals and has been initially identified eight major bills for approval this Congress. First, we fully support the passage of the right to adequate food framework, dubbed the Zero Hunger Bill, which will attempt to replicate the success of the former Zero or Zero Hunger Program of the Brazilian government in the early 2000s that reversed hunger and poverty in their country. Second, is the Comprehensive Anti-Discrimination Act that seeks to provide protection from all forms of discrimination on the basis of ethnicity, race, religion, or belief, sex, gender, sexual orientation, language, disability, HIV status, educational attainment, and other forms. Another priority measure is the Human Rights Defenders Protection Act, which has been raised as an important measure even in the UN, where the UN Special Rapporteur on the Situation of Human Rights Defenders has called on the Philippines to enact this bill and ensure the rights of human rights advocates. Fourth, is the National Preventive Mechanism on Torture Bill, which is consistent with the state's ratification of the optional protocol to the Convention Against Torture in 2012. Fifth, is the measure that seeks to strengthen the Commission on Human Rights, a law long overdue in light of the numerous challenges on human rights that the Commission has to contend with. Next are bills on the protection of internally displaced persons, those who are affected by armed conflict and other forms of human rights violations, and the Magna Carta on religious freedom or belief and the Anti-Racial, Ethnic, and Religious Discrimination Bills. Finally, Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, the Committee is open to an engaging discussion on human rights issues with civil society, our government agencies, and all the members of this revered chamber. I seek your brilliant input and diverse ideas to help us formulate and develop a national human rights action plan in a manner that is inclusive, comprehensive, and responsive to the needs of our people. As I may quote the good word, the Bible, Mister Speaker, it at least speaks of human rights to be this in Romans chapter 2 verse 11, "For there is no respect of persons with God." In James 2:9, "But if ye have respect of persons, ye commit sin and are convinced of the law as transgressors." Without respect of persons means impartial, fair, and equal. Let this be the kind of country and people we have observing with grace the equal protection clause of our Constitution. In 1 Timothy, chapter 5, verse number 21, and I quote, "Thou observe these things without preferring one before another, doing nothing by partiality." In James 3:17, and I quote, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy." Pagdating sa karapatan at kapakanan ng ating kawabayan, naipakita natin sa ating kasaysayan na ang camera, itong House of the People ay talagang maasahan. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, maraming-maraming salamat po at magandang hapon sa inyong lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the third district of Iloilo, the Honorable Lawrence Defensor, for his interpretation.
Honorable Defensor is recognized for his interpretation. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Will the statesman from Manila yield?
Yes, Mister Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you to the Honorable Abante for inspiring the members of the House of Representatives to pursue or fight to protect and uphold human rights. May I know from the good gentleman, Mister Speaker, if the Constitution, if our Constitution provides that we shall protect or give full protection to human rights?
Oh yes, Mister Speaker. The very reason why I mention all of these things to you is because the Constitution has declared that every human person in our country should be afforded equal rights and should have the equal protection of our laws. And the very bills that I mentioned, Mister Speaker, are enabling laws so that we could be able to implement the provisions of the Constitution.
That is correct, Mister Speaker. In fact, Article 2, Section 11 of our Constitution provides, and I quote, that we shall give full protection to human rights. May I know from the good gentleman also that regardless of the laws that we will pass, some of the provisions of our Constitution, including those in the Declaration of Principles and State Policies, especially those contained in Article 3 under the Bill of Rights, may I know if he agrees with me that these provisions and these rights accorded under the Constitution are self-executing? Tama po ba?
Mister Speaker, that would be more of a gray area, you know. The reason why we in Congress would like to pass bills to become laws so that we could be able to execute whatever is declared in a Constitution. It means this, Mister Speaker, that the very Constitution itself, itself, is not self-executory, unless otherwise there are laws that would enable these provisions to be executed.
Mister Speaker, I agree in part with the Honorable Abante. But for the Bill of Rights, everything under Article 3 of our Constitution, the right to life, the right to freedom of speech, the right to freedom of expression, the right to due process of law and equal protection, lahat po yan ay self-executing, at tama po siya. At naniniwala ako sa kanya na dapat panindigan po natin ang mga karapatan na ito. There are also those under our Constitution, katulad po ng desisyon ng ating Korte Suprema sa Manila Bay na dapat protektahan. The right to a healthful ecology ay mga self-executing provisions po yan. Nagpapasalamat po ako sa kanya that he gave attention to the rights, especially in the midst of all the news that we are hearing in the media. May patayan, may extrajudicial killing, na va-violate ang freedom of the press. Malaking bagay po yan. Because here in the House of Representatives, we are not only here to pass laws, but knowing that the Honorable Abante is a former minority leader, one of the best minority leaders. Nakikita po niya kung paano is sinusulong na mga miyembro ng minorya ang mga karapatang pantao. Tama po ba kaya that every time we deliberate the budget for our General Appropriations Act, does the gentleman from Manila agree with me that we should not reduce, but in fact sustain and even increase the budget of the Commission on Human Rights because the CHR is at the frontline of protecting and upholding and speaking out whenever there are human rights violations against Filipino citizens?
I fully agree, Mister Speaker. Thank you so much for publicly saying it. Thank you so much.
Mister Speaker, mapakarami po nating karapatang pantao na nasa loob ng ating Konstitusyon. Napakarami po nating mga kapatid at mga kasamahan sa kongresong. Araw-araw is sinusulong ang karapatang pantao, especially the freedom of the press and the freedom of expression. Now that we are here in Congress and we should speak what is right and what is true. Nagpapasalamat ako sa pagkakataon to be enlightened by the Honorable Abante and to have this enlightening exchange of how short we are in upholding our human rights. Before I end, Mister Speaker, during the recent convention of the United Nations Convention, uh, Human Rights Council, ilan po ang recommendations ng United Nations Human Rights Council para sa Pilipinas na para sana sundin natin? Naaalala niyo po ba?
If I'm not mistaken, Mister Speaker, parang nabasa ko na more than 200 yan eh.
That's correct, Mister Speaker. In fact, there are 289 recommendations by the United Nations Human Rights Council, for the Philippines to uphold and protect. Ilan lang po kaya ang tinanggap ng Pilipinas sa 289 na narekomendaan ng United Nations?
Wala pa pong isandaan, I think. It's only about 80, no?
You are previously correct. Out of the 289 recommendations by the United Nations Human Rights Council, 200 po ang tinanggap natin. So tama po kayo. I hope that we do not stop at 200. I hope that we will uphold and protect the human rights and all kinds of rights under our 1987 Constitution. At bigyan po ng pagkakataon na 'yung 89 na hindi pa natin tinatanggap, bigyan ng pagkakataong masuri natin ang husto at mapag-usapan para po masunod natin at maging sangayon po tayo sa mga plataporma ng United Nations pagdating sa pagprotekta at pagsulong ng human rights. Maraming salamat po kay Honorable Abante. Thank you so much, Mister Speaker.
Maraming salamat po, Mister Speaker, sa inyong suporta tito sa ating human rights concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Benvenido Abante Jr. and its interpretation to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The privileged speech of Honorable Abante and the interpretation of Honorable Defensor is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, before we proceed, I move that we recognize the guests of Representative Harris Christopher M. Ong Chuwan of the second district of Nordonchamar, namely, 2010 Miss Universe runner-up Venus Ra, Danilo Orkiko, Don Orkiko, David Loyosa, and Johnson Almeria.
To the guests of Honorable Harris Christopher Ong Chuwan, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the first district of Bohol, the Honorable Edgar M. Chato be recognized to avail of the privilege art.
The gentleman from the first district of Bohol, Honorable Edgar Chato is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker and my esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege in celebration of the National Climate Change Consciousness Week, ordained under Proclamation Number 1667, Series of 2008. Last week, the 27th Conference of Parties of the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, or COP27, which was held in Egypt, came to a close. COP27 was particularly significant as it dictated a part of its agenda, finance, adaptation, and loss and damage, issues which are very vital, vital importance to the countries such as ours. A house contingent composed of select members of the Committee on Climate Change, headed by Senior Vice Chair Josie Lim Kai Chong and Vice Chairman Anna Tuazon, and Vice Chairman Anna Tuazon participated in the event. Our thanks to the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Ramualdes in ensuring that this Congress was duly represented. And as Chair of the Committee, it is my honor to report some of the gains made in that momentous global conference, specifically on the issue of loss and damage. As a brief background, the landmark 2015 Paris Agreement has created a pathway for legal recourse in ensuring accountability. Article 8 of the Paris Agreement provided legal basis and installed the concept of loss and damage as a thematic pillar under the Climate Change Convention. Article 9.8 also provides a legal base to tackle finance for loss and damage under the Warsaw International Mechanism on Loss and Damage. The institutionalization of loss and damage as the third pillar of international climate policy after mitigation and adaptation is a necessary affirmation of the historical, practical, and moral responsibilities of nations in relation to development in the issue of climate change. Indeed, countries which have significant contribution to climate change should be held accountable by those who are adversely affected by the phenomenon's impacts. During COP26 at Glasgow last year, G77+ China, or the Group of Developing Countries, proposed a new Glasgow Loss and Damage Facility to provide developing countries affected by climate disasters with financial support. But the proposal, as expected, was stumped down by the developed nations. The developing countries had to settle for the compromise of Glasgow Dialogue between parties, relevant organizations, and stakeholders to discuss the arrangements for the funding of activities to avert, minimize, and address loss and damage. Hence, we law the gains of COP27 as follows. First, there is already an agreement that the Santiago Network on Loss and Damage shall have an advisory body, a secretariat, and a host to the secretariat. And second, there is a text proposed by the COP Presidency on matters relating to funding arrangements to loss and damage associated with the adverse effects of climate change, which includes identifying and expanding sources of funding. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, this may be incremental triumphs in the COP negotiations, but steps nevertheless towards the right direction. You may have read about the latest World Risk Index released last month. The report which measured risk from extreme natural events and the effects of climate crisis ranked the Philippines as one of the world's top disaster risk hotspots. If I may, Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues in this August chamber, I would not even use the word "risk" anymore when speaking of climate change as it is a fact now that the Philippines, without any doubt nor risk, faces loss and damage all year round. Indeed, for a country such as ours, loss and damage as a result of climate change is not anymore a risk, but a reality. Indeed, as nations prepared for COP27, our country was still reeling from the impacts of severe tropical storm Paeng, the latest extreme weather event and the sixth one to impact the country since August. Paeng came at the heels of super typhoon Carding and affected where not or only just recovering the super typhoon Udet, which swept through the country in December 2021 and left damages estimated at a minimum of 33 billion pesos. But the 2022 typhoon season is not an isolated case. Year after year, millions of Filipinos lose their jobs, lose their loved ones, their homes, their livelihoods from extreme weather events. In 2021, the Department of Finance estimated that the cost from loss and damage from climate hazards since 2001 is equivalent to 506.1 billion pesos. But aside from the sudden onset climate impacts such as climate weather, our country also needs to deal with slow onset climate impacts such as sea level rise, ocean warming and acidification, drought, biodiversity loss. This will affect more Filipinos, particularly those who live in coastal areas and those who depend on the sea or forest or on farming for their livelihoods. It is not surprising that two surveys conducted this year showed how Filipinos are most worried about the impacts of climate crises. The vulnerability of the Philippines as well as other poor nations underscores the importance of climate justice. Rich nations and corporations must take responsibility for the adverse impacts of climate change. Such a responsibility includes raising the ambition for cutting carbon emissions and committing to finance that allows poor nations to deal with adverse climate impacts. The case of Milli Defense versus Royal Dutch Shell, decided by the District Court of Hague in May 2021, was anchored on the Paris Agreement. In a watershed decision, the court recognized the obligation of respondent Shell Corporation to mitigate climate change by instructing it to curtail its greenhouse gas emissions from its 2019 levels by 45% by 2030. In 2015, Honorable Speaker, my dear colleagues, the Philippines itself made history when the typhoon survivors and civil society groups lodged a complaint before the Commission on Human Rights, calling for a probe into the possible human rights violations of several carbon emitters, the carbon majors, much of which are oil, gas, coal, and cement corporations in the context of climate change. At the time of its filing, it was the world's first investigation into potential corporate responsibility for climate change. In May 2022, the Commission on Human Rights released its report on the inquiry. And among its findings were that climate change is a human rights issue and that carbon majors can be held liable for their human rights violations. Towards this end and its report, it laid down several recommendations, including disincentivizing financial institutions from funding carbon majors and creating a sufficient loss and damage facility. It is to be noted, however, that the Commission's report is not legally binding. This notwithstanding, it serves a robust precedent and a framework for extracting further accountability for those who would like to subsequently pursue litigation in either domestic or international courts. In another historic move, the United Nations General Assembly passed a resolution in July 2022 declaring that everyone on the planet has a right to a clean, healthy, and sustainable environment and called on states to step up efforts to ensure this right is protected. The resolution further affirmed that the promotion of human rights to a clean, healthy, and sustainable environment requires the full implementation of the multilateral agreements under the principles of international environmental law. Again, like the Commission on Human Rights report, the resolution is not legally binding, however, it is hoped that said resolution will create a trickle-down effect and lead countries to incorporating that right in their national and local laws. A law therefore which ensures that climate-related human rights violations find legal remedy is necessary and urgent. Without a legal framework to address loss and damage from climate change impacts, millions of Filipinos will continue to suffer without any recourse or relief from the harms that threaten their lives and their health, shelter, livelihood, among others. Fossil fuel dependence as the growing field of attrition, since it field of attribution, science can confirm, puts communities in actual risk where slow onset events associated with the adverse impacts of climate change and extreme climate events and where climate variability and climate vulnerability meet and create the conditions ripe for disaster. The slow onset nature of climate change also makes it problematic to locate fittingly within the traditional legal notion of harm and injury because by the time the sea level rise, apocalyptic typhoons, droughts, spread of diseases, and heat waves happen, among others, conducting, contributing to climate change that has taken place. In other words, these apocalyptic events are mere inevitable consequences of a prior harmful conduct that has occurred. It is thus imperative that we take a step back, make a paradigm shift, and treat conduct contributing to climate change as a harmful in and of itself. A loss and damage-focused legal framework for these aforementioned climate-related issues will be a world's first and shall establish a specific climate action track in addition to adaptation and mitigation. It shall serve too as an innovative, pioneering example of national legislation to enhance climate action, protect communities, and effect transformative change. Paris Agreement is eloquent in reminding states to respect, promote, and consider their respective obligations to human rights, the right to health, the right to indigenous people, local communities, migrants, children, persons with disabilities, and people in vulnerable situations, and the right to development as well as gender equality, empowerment of women, and intergenerational equity. Justice means that we support the most vulnerable community to recover from the past and current climate disasters. I am happy to note that the Philippine delegation to COP27 led by Secretary Antonia Yulo Loizaga has committed prior to the COP to continue to assert and safeguard the country's interest in climate change negotiations, ensuring that we receive the appropriate support and assistance as a country vulnerable to climate change. She also said that they will call for bolder climate actions and demand the delivery of what is due for the developing countries which hardly produce any greenhouse gas emissions, yet suffer the most and continue to bear the brunt of the adverse impacts of climate change. Continue calling on developing countries to step up these obligations and deliver without delay on their commitments on climate finance, technology transfer, and capacity building. Another notable development on this front is the commitment of local leaders from across the country, mayors, board members, councilors, to call for and stand for climate justice. Last month, I was privileged to host in my home province of Bohol, a policy forum for Visayan LGUs. From the forum, it was evident that the climate crisis and its impacts on communities is top on the mind of our local executives. Ahead of COP27, they called on our national government and other nations to address the climate emergency at its roots and demand accountability from the biggest climate polluters for their significant contribution to this crisis through compensation for loss and damage. We hope that more LGUs and LGU executives and policymakers will sign this statement and file resolutions to support climate justice. Finally, last September, in front of the UN General Assembly, His Excellency President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. himself called for climate justice. He said, and I quote, "Those who are the least responsible suffer the most. The Philippines, for example, is a net carbon sink. We absorb more carbon dioxide than we emit. And yet, we are the fourth most vulnerable country to the effects of climate change. This injustice must be corrected. And those who need to do more must act now." I believe the nation or the notion of climate justice and obligation for those responsible to show accountability for climate crisis and to repair loss and damage experienced by vulnerable communities is well understood. What we need to do now is translate talk into action. This is the objective of the CLIMA bill we are trying to formulate, short for Climate Accountability Bill, which is ongoing consultation with different sectors. This proposed legislation, perhaps the first of its kind in the world, seek to institute policies and systems to address climate change, establishing the necessary institutional mechanisms for protection of most vulnerable communities to loss and damage in the country. With this contribution, it is my hope that indeed, being known as number one vulnerable people, Filipinos will instead be recognized as being the first to translate into law one resolute call for climate justice. Honorable Speaker, my dear colleagues, more than a race to have the first law of its kind in the world, we are more committed to stop romanticizing the Philippines as a helpless victim in this global climate issue. We will exact accountability not on the lens of liability, but on good stewardship of our one and only Earth. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker, and good day.
Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader. Honorable Abante.
May I be allowed, Mister Speaker, if my good friend from Bohol would yield some claret rhetorical questions?
Yes, Mister Speaker, my pleasure.
Please proceed.
Mister Speaker, my dear colleague, I'm so glad that my good friend from Bohol actually realized and even made a statement that climate change is also a human rights issue, a big, big human rights issue. It only tells us, Mister Speaker, my dear colleague, that the human rights issues are so large and encompassing. Is this bill already filed in Congress, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, the process of formulating the bill is ongoing. It will be filed soon. And we are very, very open also to inputs coming from the different sectors, both from the private sector as well as the non-government organizations and the private sector group. We would like to welcome also inputs because this is a very, very novel and ideal measure to pass, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I hope that my good friend from Bohol would also include me as one of the co-authors of the bill, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I'm very happy to work with Congressman Bishop Abante. And that is truly a good, inspiring move on his part to be a co-author, Mister Speaker.
May I know, Mister Speaker, if we have enough laws already crafted to check on the climate change, Mister Speaker? Or we do not have any law yet on that?
There are many laws passed already that relates to environment that has also is direct and indirect impact on climate change itself. And what is needed now is also to review these particular laws. And there are also laws now that are presently in our committee that covers many areas of concern on climate change. We are also reviewing the coastal management law as well as the Green Belt Program law. This will be contributory to the overall target. But the loss and damage is something that is not there yet.
Mister Speaker, my dear colleague, the government is not the only one responsible to be able to address climate change, but the very people themselves. So may I know, Mister Speaker, perhaps my dear colleague would be able to tell us, what can our people do? What can our people do to address this climate change, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, a conference was held yesterday to open the week-long Climate Change Consciousness Week. And I was seated beside our Secretary of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Secretary Loizaga. We were discussing also specifically on that issue on how to bring down to the community level not only awareness but also the active participation of people, understanding what climate change is. And even the ordinary children at the different schools and the state colleges and universities in the community, they will have a very big contribution in their own ways because just managing solid and waste, water, and oil, these contributes to addressing the concerns on climate change. And also, our oceans have already been filled up with thrash coming from the U-... coming from the use of men of various single-use plastics and all. These are still practices that can be regulated among people. Meaning to say, from small contributions to the big contributions of environmental protection, this also has a direct impact in climate change other than the very big moves of carbon majors, for example, in regulating and reducing fuel that will fossil fuels that will contribute to our carbon emissions and greenhouse gases.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Also, I heard that wealthy countries would contribute to poor, smaller countries to address the climate change, Mr. Speaker?
That is the demand of the developing countries in the Conference of Parties, and there is an improvement from COP26 to COP27 because in COP27, there is already an agreement that they are going to have a secretariat that will monitor the implementation of agreements among nations. And that is why the term that we need the developing countries is always asking and claiming for climate justice.
Okay. Should we now, just the last question, should we now perhaps minimize the use of carbon emission in the country? And of course, also the use of coal in our energy, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there are provinces already that has declared policies on no to coal, including my province of Bohol. At the time when I was still governor, we passed that ordinance, no to coal. So even in the process of selecting power suppliers now, the coal providers, those that engages in the supply of power through coal, is not included anymore in the list. And there are quite a number of provinces also doing that, Mr. Speaker. And on the side of the Energy Department, I think they have a gradual process of no to new coal. These are policy approaches that are being advocated as well.
I was told, Mr. Speaker, la huli na lang, no? Na despite all of the energy things we have like the windmills, like geothermal, whatever it is, that if we get the coal out of energy, that the whole country will be affected.
I think that's the reason, Mr. Speaker, that it is emphasized that the phase-out will not be abrupt. It has to be planned well and gradual. The process must be calculated as well with timeframes. And also, renewable energy is being encouraged and incentivizing also industries that will have lesser contribution to global warming is actually the trend. This is a tough job to do, but what is important is we are able to meet the required targets because going beyond the temperature of 1.5 degrees centigrade in the next years to come will create an irreversible damage that will also have very far-reaching negative impacts to the country, agriculture, economy, health, and it's a global issue that we are now facing today.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my dear colleague.
Thank you very much, distinguished gentleman from Manila.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Chato and its interpolation to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The privileged speech of Honorable Chato and the interpolation of Honorable Abante is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Privilege hour is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, I move that we recognize the guests of the Representative Edgar M. Chato of the First District of Bohol from Greenpeace Philippines, namely Lea Guerrero, Virginia Benosalioring, Yonil Santos, Grace Duran Cabus, Janina Magundayaw, from Legal Rights and Natural Resources Center, Friends of the Earth, Attorney Evinita Taqueban, Attorney Ryan Rosset, and from the community leaders of Marquina, namely Jimic Seguera, Joey Nunez, Teofilo Duarte, Elsinacilam, Alvin de la Cruz, Lorenzo Portento, Delia Casim, Salvacion Garcia, Teresita Fragata, Rosalyn Perocho, from Greenpeace Volunteers, namely Patricia Shelley Santos. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The guest of Honorable Edgar Chato is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, I've moved that we recognize the guests of Dale B. Corvera of the Second District of Agusan del Norte, officials from the Municipality of Nasipit, Agusan del Norte, namely Honorable Rosco Democrato B. Plaza, Mayor, Honorable Leonardo C. Beniga, Vice Mayor, and Honorable Emelenda B. De Loso, Counselor.
The guest of Representative Dale Corvera is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we consider House Bill Number 5830 as contained in Committee Report Number 112 and Direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 5830.
House Bill Number 5830, An Act Declaring January 22 of Every Year A Special Non-Working Holiday in the Municipality of Giginto, Province of Bulakan in Celebration of the Halamanan Festival.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the measure is that its approval on second reading has been reconsidered. I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Rex Gachalian, Chairperson of the Committee on Local Government, to sponsor the measure and accept proposed amendments.
Representative Rex Gachalian is recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with the period of individual amendments. And for this purpose, recognize Representative Ambrosio C. Cruz Jr. from the Fifth District of Bulakan for his proposed individual amendments.
Representative Cruz is recognized for the individual amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On Page 1, Section 1, Line 2, I move that we replace the word "halaman" with "halamanan", which is really the intention of the bill.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Okay. Sir Speaker, I move that we amend the title of the House Bill Number 5830 to read as follows: An Act Declaring January 22 of Every Year A Special Non-Working Holiday in the Municipality of Giginto, Province of Bulakan in Celebration of the Halamanan Festival. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. What does the sponsor say?
The Committee accepts, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to propose individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. Period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 5830 as amended.
There is a motion to approve House Bill 5830 as amended. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. House Bill Number 5830 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for today, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6069 under Committee Report Number 167 and request that the Secretary-General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary-General is directed to read the House Bill title.
House Bill Number 6069, An Act Promoting Philippine Indigenous and Traditional Writing Systems and Providing for Their Protection, Preservation, and Conservation.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the sponsor of said measure, Representative Roman Romolo.
Representative Roman Romolo is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. It is an honor on the part of the Chairperson of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to sponsor House Bill Number 6069 in substitution of House Bill Number 2708. This measure principally authored by Chairperson Yeda Romualdes and Deputy Majority Leader Jude Asidre seeks to protect, preserve, and conserve our Philippine indigenous and traditional writing systems. This shall be done, Mr. Speaker, first by inclusion of these writing systems in relevant subjects of our basic and higher educations as an elective or specialized course in higher education. There will be activities to be spearheaded by the Department of Education, the CHED, with the local governments to promote awareness of these writing systems, particularly during Buwanang Wika and other similar occasions and events. The conduct of seminars, conferences, conventions, symposia, and other relevant activities on Philippine writing systems taking into consideration the writing system that is indigenous to a particular region. To protect, preserve, and conserve indigenous and Philippine traditional scripts, the NCCA shall take the lead. I am certain that members of this august chamber would wish to pass this measure in order to promote patriotism and a sense of social consciousness amongst our Filipino citizenry. And so, Mr. Speaker, before we submit this for interpolation, may I also ask that the principal author of said measure, the Deputy Majority of this House, the Honorable Jude Asidre, be recognized to also sponsor said measure.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Jude Asidre of Tinok Party List to also sponsor House Bill Number 6069.
Representative Jude Asidre is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, it is my honor to sponsor this afternoon on behalf of the principal authors, House Bill 2708, An Act Promoting Philippine Indigenous and Traditional Writing Systems and Providing for Their Protection, Preservation, and Conservation. Our scholars and artists have long posited that our nation's future is built on our shared sense of national identity through our appreciation of our common heritage. It is through this connection that we develop a shared interest to help in accomplishing the present aspirations of our country. The Philippines has an abundance of various types of historical writing systems which have been existing even prior to the colonization of our country. However, not all writing systems are known or acknowledged. Thus, it is important for the state to promote and preserve not just a singular or the dominant writing system, but also other similar indigenous and traditional writing system within which our history and culture is incorporated. While these writing systems are recently being revived again, it is becoming vulnerable and in danger of misrepresentation and alteration due to the lack of standards and technological advancements. Proper and official-recognized standardization, publication, and documentation must therefore be established in order for these writing systems to sustain its intrinsic characteristics. Mr. Speaker, with this in mind, we are pleased to sponsor this House bill which seeks to promote, protect, preserve, and conserve the Philippine indigenous and traditional writing systems and to use them as tools for enhancing cultural development, instilling national pride and identity, and safeguarding Filipino heritage and identity. As we embrace the benefits of modernity and the convenience that it brings into our daily lives, our traditional and indigenous writing systems have become more and more endangered. These disparate efforts to revive some of this, like Bai Baiin, are vulnerable to misrepresentation. Therefore, it is incumbent upon us to preserve this traditional writing system. And the bill mandates the National Commission for Culture and the Arts to lead in promulgating policy guidelines in the promotion of this writing system. The Department of Education and the Commission on Higher Education are likewise asked to include these writing systems in relevant subjects of basic and higher education or be offered as an elective or specialized course in higher education on the study of the same. We have to start realizing, dear colleagues, that our indigenous traditions and culture are not just a relic of our history, but a crucial element in our journey towards nation-building. It is part of our national identity. If we were to gain the respect and recognition of the community of nations, we must first find it within ourselves to learn to recognize, respect, and preserve our own indigenous and traditional culture. With this spirit, I ask my fellow members of this House to ensure the immediate passage of this bill. Parabing salamat po.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsors, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debates.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 6029. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Clarify, 6029?
6069, instant corrected, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 6069 on second reading. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 6069 is hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday pursuant to the rules. Allow me to put forward the omnibus motion for the consideration of the following House bills. House Bill Number 6013, under Committee Report Number 162. House Bill Number 6128, under Committee Report Number 170. House Bill Number 6129, under Committee Report Number 171.
Is there any objection?
And, Mr. Speaker, I would like to request the Secretary-General to read the titles of the following measures.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bills.
House Bill Number 6128, An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Florida Blanca, Province of Pamanga, a campus of the Pamanga State Agricultural University to be known as Pamanga State Agricultural University Florida Blanca Campus and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 6129, An Act Converting the Satellite Campuses of the Bukidnon State University located in the municipalities of Talakag, Baungon, Libona, Malitbog, Pasugong, Kabanglasan, San Fernando, Quezon, Kitautau, Damulog, Kadigilan, and Kalilangan in the Province of Bukidnon into regular campuses of the Bukidnon State University and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as a sponsorship of the said measures.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker,
Majority Leader.
There being no member who wishes to interpolate on the said local bills, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of interpolation is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments and approve the committee amendments, if any.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried. Period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading the following House bills: House Bill Number 6013, House Bill Number 6128, and House Bill Number 6129.
There is a motion to approve House Bills 6013, 6128, and 6129 on second reading. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 6013, 6128, and 6129 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Thank you.